Good evening, it is June 4th, 2019, 6:00 p.m. Uh, we are going to have a brief discussion, uh, of what will be brought out of those sessions. Thank you. Frank, I'm gonna go ahead and call the special meeting, uh, budget study session, uh, meeting two quarter. Uh, Steve, would you please call the board?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Uh, all please rise, uh, with a pledge of allegiance, please right hand of your heart. And please leave the flag, and look up to me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is here, one nation, one God, and every single one of our citizens. Thank you, please be seated. Alright, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and accept public comment. If there's any public comment? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and discuss old business. Okay. Uh, next item is the budget study session. Second budget workshop. Frank, can you leave your own? Okay, Steve, go ahead. Thanks.
Those items and report back, uh, and then subsequently, we'll take any direction, further direction received tonight, and put that into the final budget, which will be heard by the council on June 25th. Uh, our focus again specifically is those items that were raised in the last council meeting as either issues that we needed to address or, um, were pending at that time. So, uh, we're gonna kinda focus on that. Frank has a PowerPoint presentation, but obviously, we can answer questions or anything you have. So, we'll start with Frank.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Prokhorov, council members. What we did is, uh, we went back and looked at, uh, uh, the, again, the, the assumption of the issues that were addressed in our first workshop, and, uh, some of the items that, uh, the council, uh, essentially asked for, and so, we tried to work those into the budget. And, uh, the next few slides, uh, go to those issues. Excuse me. Uh, first item is, uh, the general fund, cash emergency reserve. We, uh, with, uh, the available fund balance and the projected revenue, uh, and the other items that, uh, that are in the budget, we were able to bring that reserve up to, um, the limit of the fifty percent of, uh, operating expenditures. That'll be an addition of, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, to the existing, uh, a little bit less than one point six million, uh, reserve. Bringing the reserve up to, uh, one million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
What was that number last year?
It was, uh-
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand less than that, so I'm just under one point six.
Sorry, at the beginning of last year, so what was it before we used the, uh, the, the stuff out for the-
Oh, we-
Okay, I thought that, that number, two twenty-eight, doesn't seem quite the same value, but I guess it's the two twenty-eight plus this one forty-six, so I'll have to look that up and just come back to you on that.
Do you recall what the percentile difference was, if we don't recall the-
We were approximately forty-seven percent last year, so this is what it's at, fifty percent for our general reserve.
Okay.
Our general reserve, which is, there's separate reserves which you're probably thinking of-
Right, got it, that's why I'm putting those together, got it.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Um, and this, uh, our next item is the, uh, the reserve that, uh, the council, uh, has asked us to look at, at re-establishing. Last year, we, we had to utilize, excuse me, a couple of different reserves, a capital reserve and an infrastructure reserve, uh, for our, um, our capital projects, um, mainly the, the street rehabilitation project. But we're able to, uh, re-establish a reserve, uh, for future years, uh, for use in future years, uh, as an infrastructure capital.
That's fully restores that one reserve-
Yep. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Uh- And, and I would, I would along here too, the infrastructure management advisory committee had sent a, um, they sent a memo that I shared with you, Al. One of the items in there, not just interspersed there, they did recommend that we, uh, can, they continued, they suggest we continue yearly incremental contributions to the general fund, to their reserve. We're actually fully restoring it, so we're beyond where they actually, and she, she was thinking we would build it up to the hundred and fifty, but we're actually fully restoring it to the forty-six at this point. So, we're, we're fir-, we're a little further along than the infrastructure management had suggested.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, the next item is another, uh, establishment of reserve, it's for the trail maintenance. Um, our maintenance supervisor, Michael, has mentioned that some of the, um, trail railings are, um, starting to look a little bit shabby and, uh, they're not, uh, cheap to replace and repair, so, uh, we thought that it would be prudent to start putting some money into a reserve for, uh, those repairs.
And again, the infrastructure management has talked about sort of replacing some of the spots where we do have continual runoff each year, so that ten thousand allows us to start moving in different, there's different concentrations of different kinds of materials you're putting in. So, every year, we just keep replacing, replacing, and replacing. This is, so the, the desire would be to put in something and get something that's more permanent, so we're not continually watching it wash away each year, and I think the infrastructure group has suggested that we, it's a different composition, and I'm not an engineer, but there's something that we put in differently, so this would be going toward that type of material.
And, real quick, I apologize, I don't have this in front of me, there's like an AQMD portion of this for trails maintenance too, right?
The AQMD money, we used it in the past, um, but that is specifically, they tightened the rules, they want it specifically, it has to be related to, um, reducing traffic. The problem with trails, we've had this discussion with them, I personally have had discussions with AQMD, trails are recreational and not intended, you know, they're, the purpose is to encourage walking, not reduce traffic. So, it's, so it's, they don't buy that, they will not pay versus for that.
Okay.
So, we, we tried that, but they sort of, uh, once they closed the loophole, if you will, so we don't have that ability, and I would say the loophole is, it's not really, but the, the permissiveness allowing us to do that, um, is no longer there. But you're right, AQMD money, we did use fifty-five thousand in half-years, um, but that is not gonna be available to us, so, if you think of other ways to do that, we might be able to, uh, uh, fifty-five thousand to reduce traffic. That's the kind of thing we could do. So, for instance, the concept is, if we were to go for electric vehicles or something, that, on charging stations, that fifty-five thousand could be used for that purpose.
Got it, so we do have that AQMD money still available, it's just that it's not gonna be for the trails.
We have to apply for it, when it's allocated, but if we don't use it, it gets reallocated to some other entity.
Okay.
Uh, next item, uh, is the street rehab project. What we've, uh, determined we could do is put a total of eight hundred and ten thousand, uh, for, uh, additional street rehabilitation. Uh, it's broken up, uh, funding-wise from the, uh, general fund, uh, our gas tax fund in Measure M. Because of the, uh, general fund, we'd only have to, uh, pitch in basically, uh, just a portion of, of the project. Uh, it, uh, was a, we were able to, uh, to include, uh, that project.
How much?
Infrastructure management, that you'll see, they recommended nine hundred thousand. One of the things that we do, you recall the study that we set out, that was done by consultants, said to, to maintain the level of PCI that you have now, you would put seven, just under seven hundred thousand. So, this would allow us to, in the, in the consultant's term, to go beyond a hundred, it'd be about a hundred and, a little bit, a hundred thousand, toward improving beyond our current PCI, so that would be putting additional resources in. And I believe Councilman Colacott had asked that we try and put more money in there, so, there's an additional hundred and, uh, ten thousand dollars on that. It is not, I wanna be clear, it's not the same that, the, the nine hundred thousand that the infrastructure management, but it's, it's, in my mind, it's, it's a long way toward trying to get there.
How much do we spend this year?
Uh, I believe Ockham had mentioned that, uh, projected total cost is a little over a million, about a million, uh, twenty thousand is what I utilized as projections, in total.
Which, which again includes my gas tax measure and the-
Mm, okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll do this clearly, one of the things that, that the infrastructure management, we've had some long discussions with them, was the idea that a street slurry seal, uh, many, many cities use it, we don't typically do that type of, much of a program in here, um, so the, the infrastructure management said, uh, put two hundred thousand to it. What that does is basically improves the length, uh, helps us roads last longer, if you will, that we, we can do.
It would help the roads last longer that we have done work on. So, in other words, um, it would allow us to make some improvements and, and, uh, sort of relieve, relieve some of the deterioration we have. Um, and that would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we use seventy-five thousand of general fund, and we would use Measure M of fifty thousand. The two hundred thousand is what they recommended from the, um, from the, um, infrastructure management, but again, it's an effort on our part, it's a new, it would be a new hundred and twenty-five thousand, where we aren't doing that right now. That would've been part of our current project, so, combined, I wanna say the infrastructure management said one point one million, uh, we're putting nine hundred and thirty-five thousand instead of one point one, so, we're a hundred and sixty-five, unless my math is off, a hundred and sixty-five short of what the infrastructure management had. But on top of that, we're also putting in forty thousand for, uh, just basic street repair, that they didn't include, so, if you take that, so we're probably a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, less of what, than what the infrastructure management suggested. But again, farther than we have gone, uh, we would've normally gone, based on their recommendation, trying to get there, and meet all of our other needs and balance everything.
So, when we do these budget items, I apologize for interrupting or continually, but, um, is there already a plan for that money, like you've just, you have a number, but does that number actually correspond to specific things that you're doing?
We would deal with, we identified a number of streets already, if you recall, that just last council meeting, is it last meeting or the meeting before, I forget which it was, but we identified those streets. This would allow us to move further down the list of PCI, so, the number, the number sort of drives a lot of it, because if you, if you have more that you can put away, you, you, you go for more streets, and you can accomplish more, uh, with those projects, or with, with-
I meant specifically on the slurry seal stuff, is that stuff that is also identified in that same, I don't remember seeing that-
The slurry seal is a new, that's one of the things, it's relatively new, so we would address those streets from a different perspective than, than actual PCI, we would look at what, you know, some streets are more appropriate, because you're gonna have to do, a lower PCI may require, and, and I'm not an expert in any way, shape, or form, but a, a lower PCI may require a pavement, a complete pavement repair, or whatever. A, a slurry seal is not gonna be done on a PCI that's very low, that's are gonna do on something that's maybe moderately or better shape, and it's gonna preserve it a little longer in that shape, if you will. Whereas, uh, if you've got a real low PCI, you're gonna have a lot more that has to be done to it, so you're gonna have to do complete pavement repair. So, there's two types of projects that we're talking about.
So, here's, what I was really asking is, if the infrastructure committee asked for two hundred, was that specifically like, did they have a delineation for how that two hundred, or they just pick a number?
They, they sort of said that was the number, then I, they provided us, and you, you've got the information-
And then you take that number and you work back into whatever the plan is.
You, you basically, on slurry seal, it's a cost per, um-
Per mile?
Per mile, or that you, or, I forget the grade, how much they pay-
Square footage, I see.
Square footage, or whatever, there's a, there's a rate that you pay for, so it allows us to do that much more, that we don't do. So, slurry sealing is not something we've actively, actively done a lot of in the past, we typically do full pavement projects, so this is sort of a, a branching out and sort of expanding that effort.
Yeah, it, it's a cost-effective way to, uh, reduce your, uh, future pavement maintenance costs. It's like changing the oil on your car, you can, you know, you can continue driving your car without changing the oil, but eventually, you, you're gonna have major engine repairs. Here, you know, you can let your streets go until they're so far deteriorated that they have to be rehabilitated, uh, and the, uh, the cost is, as I understand, it's about fourteen times more expensive to do it that way than to do some preventive maintenance as you go along.
And the number really is just a matter of coming up from where the, the, the amount of roads, and then a per square mile, or per-
The amount, the amount of slurry sealing you do is based on the dollar amount you have available.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to-
No, no, it's okay.
Just 'cause the intertwine between infrastructure, I wanted to kinda bring them all together.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item we have is, um, one of the items that, uh, Councilwoman Miles had asked for, uh, that's a state of the city event, uh, so we are budgeting or including in the budget, uh, ten thousand dollars for that.
Again, that's, that's not probably gonna cover this, and the next item probably will not cover the cost, we have to partner with Rotary and Community Services, but we would be, it would enable us to significantly help sponsor, is, is that the best way to say it?
So, specifically, I, I, I think it's important that we drill down on what we're trying to do with ten thousand dollars. What, what is that, what is that geared, what's the goal on that? I think just, I think, you know, the council has a decent idea, but I think when residents, if they've tuned in for the first time, they see state of the city in ten thousand dollars, is that a party, is that, um, you know, what is that? Uh, I, I think it's important that we get some clarification on that.
The idea would be that it would be a community event where the community, um, is invited to hear the mayor, um, talk about the year. Uh, usually, it would be done in late January, early February, and, and talk about the community, the, the good, the bad, talk about the budget, um, highlight any new, um, businesses, um, any new events, and really just connecting with the community and, and having people come out, and, and then again, you know, partnering with some of these community, um, uh, organizations, like the Rotary, or Women's League, or, um, foundation, and, um, really showcasing what our little hidden jewel is about, and still having the mayor be able to give an update, uh, for those people that maybe are a little shy and not being able to, um, figure out how to see us online, or only get brief little, um, snippets from the newspapers, or stuff on the feed, or things like that, so, that's-
Do you wanna talk about the next one too, with this winter wonderland?
Winter Wonderland was an idea of just, uh, you know, you can't please everyone all the time, and, um, we have a longstanding tradition, and this would not be in lieu of that, um, but supplemental to, um, kinda having a winter fest, turning this, just like we do with Halloween Fest, turning the center, this part of the center into, uh, an area where the community could come down, and kids could sled on snow, or, you know, um, feed and take pictures with the reindeer, see Santa, um, have, again, foundation, and Women's League, and Rotary, and the band, and different booster clubs come and, and, you know, help raise money for their events, and, again, just another way to bring our community together and, um, have a really great unit of, you know, yeah, fun, um, Santa's village.
So, the way we came up with ten thousand is, in talking to Councilwoman Miles, one of the things I asked was, how much does a typical event, you know, your Taste of Villa Park cost? And she says fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in that range, and I don't, you know, depending on how extravagant or whatever you do. So, I said, well, you know, ten thousand dollars makes us a significant player, but it doesn't, you know, if, if the community groups don't come forward, it's not gonna happen, it's really not, so it's gotta be a cooperative effort.
It's gotta be a public-private venture.
Public-private partnership, so I wouldn't, I didn't go fully down the road, yeah, you're right, so. Uh, that's, the, the ten thousand dollars was an attempt, say twenty thousand dollars on a, you know, budget for each event, and if we said ten percent, ten thousand, then we shipped in fifty percent, and either they come up with another ten thousand, or the event doesn't happen. That's kinda how it would be approached from my perspective. Uh, and the events themselves would take shape based on the vision of that group, or the groups, and how they wanna do it, but, but it's not atypical to have, in fact, most cities do have sort of events, uh, they may be tree lighting events, they may be picnics, or they may be something-
Street fairs.
Uh, street fairs, or whatever the things it is, something a community-type event.
Well, my, I mean, case in point, I think this is probably where this, uh, came from, my hometown's, uh, San Juan Capistrano, has a state of the city, has a Swallows Day Parade, has a number of different events, and they're, they're great for the city, they're, they're great for morale, um, and they're great for building, um, neighborhood communities, they're, you know, remembering the history of, of the city, and, um, I think if it's a public-private venture, and the city doesn't bear all the costs, uh, or even the lion's share, I think that really makes it tremendously successful. Now, we have some, we have some great groups out, you know, in the city.
The way I was thinking is the maximum we would put, participate is, is, uh, fifty percent of each event, and if they, say the event were to cost, um, you know, fifteen thousand, maybe we put seventy-five hundred in or something, maybe we work out something, you know, but that would be a cooperative agreement and discussion with the, both the respective entities. But in order to, you know, you also don't wanna short-change the event and say, well, we're not gonna give you, you know-
Absolutely.
So, that's why the ten thousand each, so that's to give you an idea of where the, the money was, I don't have a specific budget for it, because it would depend on what that event shaped up envisioned out to be. Is there food, you would probably rent ice or snow, or whatever you would rent for a winter fair, would you rent a, you know, do you have a Santa Claus here or something, you do have, what do you do, I mean, I don't, what do you do with the backdrop and all that kinda stuff? So, that's something that would have to be sort of fleshed out with the respective, uh, groups.
Do we have any sort of limitations, or anything we wanna, uh, or, I know the way we're talking about it right now, we're kind of setting some precedent on that already, but I'm thinking in terms of having, um, like, let's say, for the state of the city, uh, Rockwells, or Wells Fargo, or one of our, our, our local businesses wanted to contribute too, and then it was state of the city sponsored by this other business. We're our, we're only really talking about community groups at this point, but there's no, we're not putting any limitation on that for the future, or saying anything else about that at this point.
Nope, in fact, the one I-
Just highlighting that.
The one I went to in, uh, San Juan Capistrano, um, was actually sponsored by a tequila. So, there you go.
Take money anyway you can.
So, yeah, it would be open, public-private partnerships, I think, is that's the kinda concept.
Right.
Restaurants or whatever would wanna contribute, maybe it's in-kind services versus dollar amounts, so there's some kinds of, you know, bring food or whatever. That, that's the concept, so if the council was so inclined, we would have money set aside for that purpose.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Uh, the next item is, uh, the Wanda Green Belt Plan Development, uh, it's an item that, uh-
We talked about, one of the things we said was, we don't have a plan at this point, we don't have, I can't set aside money for a development of something, 'cause we don't have a plan, but we have the money to set aside, and if we need consultants to help us look at whatever we need to do, and we can start development and something toward those lines, so, I put aside the fifty thousand, we've, we really do, and my recommendation is, we really do something there this year, uh, we've sort of budgeted money the last couple of years and haven't, but it has been green only because of the grace of God and the rain we've had, it will brown up, and we'll be calling it the Brown Belt, uh, pretty quick, uh, during midsummer, so we do probably need to do something, what that might be, I don't know, uh, but, you know, the, this gives us a placeholder, again, not to be a target spent, but amount set aside for, as a recognition of a priority that we need to get something done on it, and actually do something on it.
I'm saying, put fifty thousand dollars, is, I'm, did I interrupt somebody? Oh, for year after year, wouldn't this be like, uh, two hundred and fifty by now, isn't that a-
No, every year, if it's not spent, government budgeting-
Wishful thinking, we ask.
Government, yeah, government budgeting, to the extent that you don't spend something, it gets re-
I was, I was-
Swooped up. No, it's a good question, because some people ask all the time, you put aside money all these years-
Where's the money?
Where's the money? Well, the money gets grouped back into what we call fund balance available, carry forward for the following year, and that gets spent on every other thing we need that we have.
Well, I'll take it on this year to come up with a plan for this.
I think we talked, it, it was a desire to have a plan and pull together something that would-
Yeah, something that, um, I think it's important, it comes from the community, I mean, we have, uh, Leah Cabrera that expressed, um, was the first person in Villa Park that really expressed interest when I raised concerns about really having a defined plan, and I think that when we get that, um, community input from different folks that come from different backgrounds, it's not just my plan, or Robbie's plan, or Bob's plan, or Deanna's plan, or, or Mike Knowles' plan, or anybody else's plan, it's, it's a really collaborative effort of the community, a bunch of folks getting together and sharing ideas, and remembering where our, where our roots are, and, um, uh, where we came from, and where we're, where we are now, and given the, the new challenges that we may face with, whether it's water, or, uh, different demographic in our community, um, I think it's important that we, um, we, we have a, a, almost like an ad hoc committee, but I, as far as the money, um, I was not an objection from me.
Okay, the next, the one is the travel and conferences, that's actually a decrease of a thousand dollars, because you recall, we had an extra thousand for the mayor, and this is per the direction of the council, we, in the last workshop, we said, why don't we make them all even, and that's where you see that the seventeen-five is a thousand dollars less.
I remember saying that, but there isn't, uh, we confirm, there's nothing else that the mayor has in addition, like, other opportunities or other things that-
The mayor does, but, um, you know, uh, candidly, uh, I would venture to say there's not seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars worth of travel expenses that a mayor needs to incur, uh, in my opinion, in my experience, and what I've seen in other councils prior to mine, um, certain folks have more free time and like to travel and participate, have certain expertises that have, that, uh, may necessitate their travel, and provide additional expertise, but some, some folks have different expertise that lend them to staying more local, and, um, uh, working on things at the grassroots level.
I, I wasn't sure if maybe that allowance had been set at some point specifically for some one extra thing that the mayor was doing, and now we're all of a sudden cutting that off, and we hadn't, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't another, great.
Not to my knowledge.
I don't think we've used a hundred percent of the travel money in the past, have we?
No, sir.
Yes, you have, you've gone over.
Individually, you have not, collectively you have.
Individually, not collectively.
Collectively.
Collectively, they have, not individually.
Okay, I see what you're saying, so, an, an individual council member, but not council as an entire whole, is that what we're saying?
Council as an entire whole has gone over.
Okay, whi-, which council was that?
Last year.
Okay, but-
But individually, that doesn't mean all five collectively, they, they collectively, some traveled more than others.
In the past, say, four or five years, how many times do we recall, do we have any numbers on that?
I have to go research on that, I don't have that data.
I just wanna make sure that we're, we have the right number here for the budget, I would hope that we have at least that basis, 'cause is that, is that your concern? Is that the reason why you're asking the question?
Uh, well, yeah, the concern was, just, all I had was last year's, that it's, the reason why it seemed that they went over- why it seemed that they went over is because there were specific council people that spent two and three times what they were allotted.
So, my recommendation is you start with seventeen-five. A budget is a budget. It's a plan.
Right.
It can be adjusted anytime by the council. So, to the extent that some circumstances arise where we say, hey, we all got to go to Washington, D.C. because they're going to do something, but we need to participate, or Sacramento, you have the ability at any time to amend and authorize something. In fact, we come to council anyway and we can address that. So, I think a budget for this point is, would seem adequate. There's the amount for everyone. And we start at that point. If we need to adjust it, that's one of the things we can do during the course of any given council meeting. We can address those accordingly. So, I would start here and, and leave it at that. That would be my recommendation.
But I also think, if I can add and be so bold, I also think us now having the travel policy where everyone has that set amount and there's no pooling really makes us delineate what's, and really think about what's going to benefit Villa Park and if our going is really a value added and is it worth the money. So, I think it helps us stay within those constraints.
Yeah, I do, I want to emphasize, go back, that the budget, these assumption things, a budget, we have to approve a budget by law. But you could go in the very first, first meeting in July and say, well, we got to change something because there's litigation or because something's come up. You have the ability to do that. There's nothing precluding the ability to, but we have to start at some point. So, it is like your home budget. You start with something and then the dishwasher breaks, you got to replace it. So, you change in something else. Or your, you know, microwave break, whatever happens. Your car breaks down, you need service, you know, whatever happens, we have the ability to adjust and amend. So, I want to keep that and make sure you guys sort of understand that. This is our starting point for the year and we'll adjust if we have to. That's sort of the, you have to be flexible on your feet. You know, the governor budget, they may do something and, you know, whatever, and we have to respond or whatever. So, I think we need to, as a big picture, we start here and we try and get done what we, you know, with those timeframes.
What's next, Frank?
I'm sorry, what?
What's next?
The city council upgrade. That's the one that's sort of near and dear to me that we've been talking about. We have seventy-five thousand. That is for this room. This room has some antiquated, came in the other day and I had someone actually pushing that with a pole to get it turned on and off because they couldn't find the remote, which is really not the way automation ought to be happening. So, there's a lot of things that we're using a pull-down screen. We're doing things. We have money that's PEG money, which is basically public education, government monies that the cable companies give us. So, it's toward that. So, it is some general fund, but also the PEG monies. Seventy-five thousand probably won't put us at complete state-of-the-art, but it will be significant improvement over some of the size screens we have, the sound, the ability to communicate, the ability to have off, you know, somebody's teleconferencing, those types of abilities. Because this room is not just used by the councils, it's used by a lot of people who ask us that all the time. Do you have this capability? Do we have the ability to project? Do we have the ability to, to telecommun, you know, do teleconferencing and things? So, the seventy-five thousand is something I would have to come back with a plan, which was asked for. But I think you know that there's a lot of more sophisticated technological abilities that are not being utilized in this room that are out there. This would also entail the back conference room, which is used pretty regularly anymore, where people could do teleconferencing there. Various groups use that in training and whatnot. So, that would allow some potential projections and things like that that we could upgrade there. So, we'll be coming back with a plan. Because of dollar amount, we'd have to bid something like this out. This wouldn't be a sole source or something, but we would be allowed, come back to the council with a plan. This is seventy-five thousand, again, is not going to be state-of-the-art of everything. But in talking to the other councils, Orange spent over two-hundred thousand on theirs, on their remodel. And I don't even think they've got the most sophisticated types of things that they could have. But there's a lot of money that can be spent on technology if you want. So, that's the seventy-five thousand.
I know you're already, sorry, jumping into this, but as somebody who does this for a living, if you have any questions, please feel free to come ask.
I will take you up on that.
In terms of picking vendors and picking people out there, I don't, I don't think I can, I don't want to influence one vendor or the other, but I can certainly give you some suggestions or talk to you about what I've seen.
Potential bid list of who we could send it to.
Right.
That type of thing. That'd be great. Handicapped accessibility, this is continuation of the, the monies that the mayor had talked about last year. One of the things that's a new increment here is I've had, started to have some discussions with the schools about this because a lot of the handicapped areas we're starting with the schools are something that they need to be doing as well. So, they've indicated an interest, saying, yeah, you know what, we, we might be willing to go into a project with you on something and deal with some of the, the handicap directly adjacent to schools. In other words, they don't want us to do schools without them being in concert anyway. But, for instance, on the high school front and things like that where they have to do ramps and whatnot, they're going to have to pay for it anyway. So, they're, let's, let's work and see if we can't do some of this stuff together. So, we have twenty-five thousand. Our hope is that the school district would also be coming forward with some money on that.
On that number, did we have twenty-five or forty thousand for last year?
Twenty-five, we had, we adjusted to twenty, it was twenty-five last year.
Okay. And now, is that a, what prohibited us from using twenty-five thousand from last year? Because we still had a number of areas that had nothing to do with the high school that could have been...
Staff time.
Staff time. Okay.
The availability of staff to get to it.
Did we bid this out or no?
No, we haven't. We have not bid this time, no. No, we have not...
Do we have a list of vendors or anything?
We have potential vendors. We just truly have been a number of other projects that haven't been...
Okay, because I just, I really, and I understand we have some projects here. I just want to make sure this can't doesn't, you know, get kicked down the road because the school district has the high school track issue to deal with. And then, you know, the three-hundred building to deal with and maybe other future bond funds or, or bond issues that they're going to deal with, you know. They've, they've got a lot on their plate too. So, if we can handle, you know, some small stuff, I think that would be great.
So, yeah, that's, that will be, point taken.
Thank you. Frank?
The, the computer upgrades, we've talked about. This is a staged process where we can, we have, we were just hearing the council, the mayor pro tem was asking to, and she says, some of our computers freeze up because some of them are old. You know, five, six years old is not uncommon in some of these. And so, they, we have problems running some of the things on them. And so, we're, we're replacing them and it's a process of what we're doing. So, we have five thousand, move us into creating, you know, replacing some of the hard drives we have on various, and that, that's what we're doing there. The city website enhancement, that's the mayor and some of the others have talked about that. Ten thousand is to help us move forward and, and sub, upgrade the capabilities we have on our website right now, which I think, again, would make us more transparent and more accessible to the, to the residents. Next element is the housing element. This is the three years. It's, you'll recall, is due in 2021. Talking to John Douglas, the consultant, he said the first year, we need to do some work on SCAG and RENA, the RENA numbers at this point. So, we'll probably be spending about ten thousand dollars this year on that. This is going to be a project. We're going to do this, this summer in July or August. We'll be doing a work session with the whole council to bring everybody up to speed. But in talking to John, he said ten thousand would be a number that we should have budgeted for this year to get started. Again, over a course of probably like twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand total. But the bulk of some of the work has to be done early in, in sort of gathering data and whatnot and pulling it all together. And I, I think this is something that the councilman Calacatta suggested. We do get started and our consultant definitely agrees. It's time to get started now. There's going to be some challenges that the new laws have created for the city and our overlay of town center may not be satisfactory from the state's perspective next year.
Have we got a long-term contract with him or something? Or, or are we required to...
We have a contract for a project, which allows us to carry it over multiple years. So, he has extended the timeframe without increasing the dollar amounts over the years. So, we have not increased his dollar, but he's expanded time as we've gone through.
Do we believe he's the right resource to continue?
We've been very successful with his efforts in, in approving the housing element and those things. He's, he's a, well, you've seen him. He's been here. I think he's a very well-qualified.
Just want, just want someone to step up and say, you know, he's been here for three or four years and time for someone else to be a part of this process. So, that's all.
I think he has a significant experience. I knew him actually in the county and he was considered one of the, the premier experts at that time. And now he's, this is twenty-some odd years later and he's, and I know the council...
Yeah, we knew each other at the county too. Just as an aside, I know we're talking about the budget, but if we could have, if he could give us updates of, as to any changes in state law that may be impacting the housing element.
Right.
I know that's a, something that the governor and the legislature is really active on this session.
Right.
And could have some significant impacts on us.
That, also, you'll see the general plan update is what we've already got going on that. So, that's a continuation of the current project, which we have going on that. And you, that is sort of the money we have budgeted for that project. Again, it's a rebudget there, so it's not anything new. It's just that we have it highlighted because that's another element that's in our budget. Homeless litigation and the contribution, you'll recall, it's about eighty-four hundred dollars that we have. And I think we've approved an MOU. I believe I just in get, got the copy of the settlement from the city of Buena Park, I mean, of Placentia. They have approved, Placentia and Buena Park have both approved their sites and they're moving forward. In fact, I believe that Buena Park has their operator already on board and they're well into design and they're going to do a prefabricated use of cargo bins to create. So, it's going to be a very monitoring. So, we're moving forward on that. So, that'll be our contribution. The hundred-and-fifty thousand is a continuation of the budget contingency, which is used only to the extent we need it. And this year we have not used it. In past years, we have used it. So, this, this year we'll budget for it. Again, anything over twenty thousand requires me to come to the city council. But if there's anything less that requires, you know, just immediate repair of this or that, we go ahead and fix air conditioning repair or plumbing or something along those lines. We, we budget those types of things there. ACC OC has changed their direction considerably. Bruce Channing is now the executive director. Bruce Channing is the longtime city manager of Laguna Hills. He was the city manager, I believe, when they, might have been when they incorporated. Extremely knowledgeable individual, extremely well-connected with both the city managers and with the legislators, et cetera, just because of his longevity. He just recently retired two years ago from the city of Laguna Hills and now is taking over this ACC OC. We have continued to participate. The six thousand, again, is not the number I've agreed to pay them. I've, we're setting a number in the budget. I've told them we need to do a smaller number than that because we have to pay for each event anyway. I don't want to keep paying and just to participate. So, he's agreed there'll be a sliding scale and us a, a cap number. And I, my hope is something closer to half of that amount that we'd actually have to pay. But I think from a perspective of, of the ACC OC, with Bruce at the helm, I think we're going to see a very different kind of direction than we had with the, his predecessor. And I think we're going to see some real proactive, positive things going on with ACC OC. So, I would recommend...
Can we also pay something for League of Cities?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's just not on here?
No, that's a, that's an ongoing, we pay that and it's not. The reason ACC is because we had pulled that money out of budget last year. Now, I'm putting the money back in. We have a merit pool that I put aside, four percent. I don't use all that, but allows me a four percent. The four percent is based on the CPI in Southern California, is a four percent in Southern California region is...
And the increase or projected increase of property tax.
Oh, and, and it's consistent with the property tax. So, it's, it's a dollar amount as a cap that I use. Again, I don't, I spread that amount. Nobody's guaranteed anything. It's not a cost of living for anybody. It's based on merit and set goals and accomplishments. So, I distribute that accordingly. And I underspend that each year. But, and again, we have to recognize, if cost of living is going up at some point, we have to be recognizing it. Okay, I think the last page you'll see is the, sort of, those things incorporated into a budget. Now, this is, the reason it's done like this, a draft, is because any changes or things that you're thinking we need to incorporate, the plan would be to take any direction we receive and finalize this into narrative and, you know, big, big budget document that you'll see for June 25th. But in lieu of doing all those documents in advance, we're sort of giving you an idea. We, we've got it ready. We're ready to do it, but we're not going to pull the trigger and get something. Now, the mayor pro tem asked for something that we will get next, the schedule, that you'll see a comparative year-to-year comparison. So, you'll see where things went up and went down. So, you'll see that as part of that. We'll make that part of the project, the, the, the package that's carried forward. But we just wanted to give you an idea of, of where things are in here. And, and the, the budget itself is several hundred pages and we're, we're well into the process of narratives and charts, et cetera. And again, I would, I record that I believe this is the, maybe the eighth year that we've received a distinguished budget presentation award that we received. So...
No pressure.
Yeah, we, we would like to, again, receive that award because I think Government Finance Office Association, that's, that's a really high accomplishment. So, you can see in Frank's office, there's a plaque with all the years on it that we've... Anyway, that's what we have. If you guys want us to make changes, if you need something that we haven't hit, I think we, we went back and went through. I listened to and watched the tape again of this to make sure we hit everything. If there's something I'm missing, tell me.
I think you did a phenomenal job of bringing it all together balanced.
Me too. This is great. Well done.
I agree.
The only, the only other question I have was, I didn't see anything in here about any potential new hires to, to offload some of the work that's going on right now. Are you anticipating any additional staff this year?
I've got a challenge that I'm going to deal with anyway, and that's the challenge of, of, as you work, Kim is expecting in August. So, we've got to transition anyway. So, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna have to deal with just maintenance right now of trying to, you know, deal with that because she leaves and goes out on maternity leave for the lau...
Four months.
Four months. So, I've got to train and pick up to that. So, the idea of training and picking up and bringing on more staff is I'm, I'm trying to judge what we can accomplish or not. There are, I have had some discussions about potential transitions because we have some people very candidly, succession planning, I guess is the best way to say it. I've had some discussions about succession planning and I have an idea. If, if anyone would like to talk to me privately about each one of them, I can tell you. And I can tell you what the plan would be and how we would do it, whether the, the mechanism that that would be handled. So, I, I've got that. But as far as taking on, bringing on new staff to handle additional work, I'm trying to be reasonable with what we've accomplished. So, sort of, our budget's in line with what we're hoping to accomplish.
The other thing that I, I've run into in my, my particular position with the company I work for today is, as I replace people who leave, it costs me twenty percent more in salary and benefits to bring on that new, that new hire. So, I realize you've got a merit pool sitting here, but keeping in mind that if you lose people in that office or staff or whatever, chances are there's going to be an inflation of dollars associated with bringing on new people. And I don't know if you've built that into your contingency or not.
I think that's the IT industry. I think that's the IT industry.
No, well...
Public sector isn't quite lucky.
The highest inflationary market, it is one of the more in-demand fields. But yes, we, we have, I have thought through that. And again, some of them, you know, we have the contingency, a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So, I believe that we'll be, you know, set to deal with it. Again, we'll have to, you know, I could talk through any individual if you want to, but I, I probably not appropriate to...
No, no. And I understand, you know, you know, over ti, over time, over the last three years, I've heard a lot about, you know, not having enough staff time to, to undertake certain things and make things happen. I see delays and things. And I'm concerned, as I told you last year, the year before, and the year before that, I'm concerned that you don't have enough staff to do everything you need to do.
Right. One of the concerns I'll be very candid about is looking, when we do look at how we do services, is I bring on staff, I bring on a potential pension liability. So, I'm very conscious of that. Calpers is raising the, lowering the discount, the discount rate, so which means it costs us more for the same pension. I guess is the best way to say it, right Frank? So, when they're going, they're going to drop it to seven percent, which it means it's going to cost us even more. So, I'm kind of conscious of that and that's where we'll deal with each of the plans. So, I'm kind of thinking through each of the positions and what we do and how we do it and the workload. But your great point, well taken.
Yeah, not necessarily always has to be a full-time person. It can be a contracted individual or something like that. But just making sure that you've got some contingencies built in here. If you need to bring on a consultant for a short period of time or whatever to help you out, to facilitate some of these activities or whatever.
I had a discussion about the, an, an, a consultant opportunity just the other day about, for instance.
Anybody else have any comments?
Good job, good job.
Bobby, Bob, Chad?
Nope.
Okay.
With that, we, our plan would be to come back on June 25th. Actually, you'll receive a document in advance of that so that you have a chance to review it. And that time we'll add the schedule that the mayor pro tem has asked. So, year-to-year, you can see the comparisons.
That's a good recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job, Frank.
If there's anything further, we'll be adjourned. Any member of the public want to comment? Okay. Thank you.